Evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 10th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
President.
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 Present.
Present, and I just want to let everyone know, we do have a brand-new AV system. If you look around, it's not working at the moment, so we're working on that. We are on Zoom and we're recording, so we will post the recording of the Zoom meeting. So if anyone is trying to get on the public access TV, they'll get a notice that directs them to Zoom. Am I right, David? So we should be okay. Before we get to a presentation with the young people, which I'm really looking forward to, we just want to take care of some appointments that we missed in December. So may I have a motion to appoint Julie Girdon to the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee for a term to expire December 1st, 2025? And this term that she is finishing out is for Peggy Bellis, who...
No.
It's not? I'm sorry. Elaine, not Elaine, Erin Provenzano. Elaine's here. Erin Provenzano, who is stepping down. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. I'm going to ask for the next three appointments all at once. The appointment of Mike Dardano to the Test Committee to expire for a term to expire December 1st, 2027. Appointment of Gianpaolo Yunaudi to the Test Committee for a term to expire December 1st, 2027. And the appointment of Tom Ringwald to the Test Committee to expire December 1st, 2027. May I have a motion for all three appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Can we mute the Zoom, please? If anyone is on Zoom, can we mute them? Okay, thank you. And Suzanne, Suzanne, can you mute your...
Yeah, wait. Yeah, I'll do it.
Thank you. This is how we do in Tuckahoe, guys. So may I ask the president of the Lions Club to come forward and to speak a little bit about the peace poster contest award winners?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Sue Ann Roche. I'm the president of the Tuckahoe Eastchester Lions Club. Each year, over 600,000 young people ages 11 through 13 from over 200 countries participate in a peace poster contest sponsored by Lions International to promote the importance of peace around the world. This year's contest theme was Peace Without Limits. Students were tasked with creating a poster that speaks to our world's infinite potential for kindness, once we commit to pursuing the ideas of peace without limits. Individual Lions Club work with local schools and youth groups for the contest. Up to three posters from all the submissions are selected by the judges to honor at the club level. Then those winning posters go to the district level, and there are 35 individual Lions Clubs in our district. They are judged, and one poster is selected. That poster goes up to the multi-district level and then to the international level. Last week, we had an awards ceremony, and I thanked the mayor for coming to help present awards, and we honored three young people whose creativity, artistic talent, and vision of peace without limits earned them first, second, and third place in our Tuckahoe Eastchester Lions Club contest, and we're proud to say that one of them went on to the district level and won at that level. All three artists come from the same school, Immaculate Heart of Mary, and they all have the same art teacher. It's impossible to recognize these young folks without also recognizing the strength of the school's program and the talent of their art teacher. So enough about me and this. I am honored to introduce our three award recipients and their art teacher and their principal. Do you want me to start with principal and art teacher or with the kids?
With the kids.
Lovely. So first, I'd like to present James Lane, who won first prize in our club's competition.
James, would you talk a little bit about your poster?
So when I first heard Peace Without Limits, my first thought was the dove, which I sort of thought symbolized peace, and I thought it was a more general sign. So I then also moved on, and I thought of the peace sign in the background, just to add a little bit to the poster. And just to fill in the poster a little bit, I added the beach background with the water and sunset, because I thought it was more of a peaceful setting. I used colored pencils and a little bit of Sharpie and pen to make it pop. That was...I mainly used colored pencils, because that's just the way I draw, but...
Nice. Thank you, James. Thank you so much.
And then I'd like to introduce Naya Henry, who won second place. But Naya also won the district-wide competition.
Sorry. So basically, when I was making this poster, I didn't really know what to do, because I heard Peace Without Limits, and I had so many ideas. And I thought, well, what's really something people immediately go to when they think of peace? They think nature, they think flowers, animals, anything visually bright or appealing. And I was like, I wanted this to speak to all type of children, adults, anybody really, and I wanted them to think, to see the embodiment of peace in one single picture, so...
Beautiful.
And I'd like to introduce Grace Amentas, who won third place in the Tuckahoe Eastchester Lions Club contest.
So to me, peace means love and compassion, and I think the dove... Yes. The dove really symbolizes hope and love for others and for nature and the world.
Beautiful. Thank you. Do you want to talk about the principal and the teacher next?
I'm sorry. I'd also like to introduce the art teacher, Phyllis Nastasio, and the principal, Tracy Kealan. Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this. Working with the kids that I get to work with is an absolute pleasure. I just have to give them a topic, and they run with it.
That's awesome.
I just want to, once again, thank you for this opportunity to give the students an experience like this and to be congratulated on such a level. Not only teaches them that there's such a bigger world outside the walls of IHM, but there's a world that's ready to embody what they believe in, and I really want to thank you for that opportunity. Working with Miss Nastasio and Sue, it's been such a great experience. And like Miss Nastasio said, I went to her in September, said, "This is what we're going to do." She said, "Let's do it." And then October 31st, the posters were done, and we were just so proud of all of them. All of their work was outstanding, but to hear that our students got the top three and got sent up to Albany is just a blessing, and it's what IHM stands for. It's to advocate for our students and for what they love to do. And we're lucky enough to have these students who are so talented in so much that they do. So once again, humbled and grateful for this experience, and we'll be in it again next year.
Yes, good, good.
Thank you.
When Sue Ann, the Lions Club, asked me to attend this event, I had, you know, I had my idea of what the peace posters were going to be, and these young people, they're not children, they're young people, really transcended my definition of what I thought the peace posters would be. They talked about not just outer peace in the world, but they also talked about inner peace, which is really important. So I was really impressed with you all. That's why I invited you to come here, and I have a small token of appreciation for the work that you did. And a huge thank you to the principal and the teacher. If you would come forward, I'll give you a little something. Yes. So James, Naya, and Grace, I just want to say thank you so much for putting your heart and soul into the project that you were given by your teachers. I want to present to you each a Tuckahoe pin that lets you know that Tuckahoe stands with you and supports you in all of your projects. So here's one for you. And on behalf of the entire board, we appreciate everything that you've done. And then we also have in here, if you open it up for me, James, you'll see it's a Tuckahoe water bottle. Open it up. You can take it out and show people. Water bottle, so that you can carry Tuckahoe with you as well. Thank you, guys. Yes, thank you very much. They have to leave. They have tests tomorrow. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Sue Ann, for the invitation.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, mayor.
Awesome.
So I know I took up a little bit of our time here. I just think it's important for us to acknowledge and celebrate young people when they're doing these great things. So thank you all for your patience on that. We'll move on to our public hearings. So we still have the public hearing open to consider proposed modifications to the village code related to short-term rentals. We did have, I think at the last meeting, Gary, you gave an update, right, on the registry, possibly for the... Maybe you can just summarize that again?
Right, so I think we're just going to be waiting on the county to see what they're going to be doing with the registry. Hopefully, they will be taking charge of that, and we could leave that up to them.
Yes. So I did put in a call to the county about it, and so we're waiting back to hear more. So we'll hold off on that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 6th meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And that takes us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone here that has any agenda items that you would like to address the board on?
Sorry. Samantha, 72 Main Street, for the Airbnbs. Is it going to be like, I forgot, but like a corporation putting Airbnb's in, or can anybody?
We have not drafted...well, we have a draft of a legislation, but we're waiting. That's why we still have the public hearing open, because the county now, there's a possibility that the county will be involved in terms of keeping a registry, and we don't know what their part will be. So it's really not...it's in the early stages of figuring that part out.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we will go to resolutions, and the first resolution, authorizing the creation of a Climate Smart Communities Task Force. Deputy Mayor, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So we, in a previous month, we joined Climate Smart Communities, and this allows us as a village and the Test Committee to apply for certain grants. If we then create this Climate Smart Communities Task Force, essentially, these will be members of TESC and members of the community who will be working. They, we essentially level up to a different level of Climate Smart Communities, and we can apply for more monies and grants. So this is advantageous to us. I hope that I represented that well, Harmeet.
Harmeet, you're welcome to come up if you'd like to say anything more about it. And Harmeet is the chair of the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, mayor. Harmeet Goindhi, 135 Oakland. I was waiting for the public hearing, but I'll speak. Thank you for approving this resolution and making Tuckahoe the part of a Climate Smart Community Task Force. What this helps is, not only, as you said, right, it helps us make a village that's more sustainable, more environmentally friendly for the kids who are here, but also it helps us save money by applying for grants, so taxpayers can, you know, have to pay less for the spending that we have to do. So thank you for doing this.
Yes, thank you. So may I have a motion to authorize the creation of the Climate Smart Communities Task Force?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, TESC, on being a Climate Smart Communities Task Force for Tuckahoe. Okay, so we also have the authorizing of the use of the community center on Friday, February 25th, for a Tuckahoe Pride movie night. I see Pride member here. If you'd like to give a little synopsis of what will happen that day?
Definitely, thank you. And I want to make a slight correction. It's actually Friday the 28th.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Friday the 23rd happens to be my birthday, so I know.
Really? So we have to celebrate. Mine is the 22nd.
It is. We're both Pisces. But good evening, Mary Andino and the board members. I just want to say, you know, thank you again for having us, giving us this opportunity. We are here to ask permission to use the community center to do a movie, a movie night for our community. We had, we're part of the Tuckahoe Pride Committee. We had actually gone and did our first LGBTQ event last year, which was very successful. We had over 500 people who showed up throughout the day. It was covered on local media, and we're planning for one again in this June. But we wanted to break up the winter and do something fun for the community. We're planning to do a screening of Rent, the movie from 2005, the musical adaptation. We invite people to come and participate, to dress up in their 90s gear, so like get into the mood, and to just be together as a community is welcome to everyone. It's free admission. We're also looking for community members who want to come either join our committee or actually show up for the event to help set up chairs or just prepare in advance. We're starting at 6:30 PM. It will run probably until about 10 o'clock, and we will have other people from the board who will be there. I unfortunately will not be there, but most of our other members will be there to help participate. If you're interested in helping, please join us online. We're at the tuckahoneypride.org or by email, which is tuckahoneypride@gmail.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So may I have a motion to authorize use of the community center on Friday, February 28th, for Pride Movie Night, featuring Rent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And similarly, on February 17th and February 21st, the Juneteenth Committee would like to also use the community center for a community youth brunch on the 17th and a community movie matinee. And I believe a Juneteenth Committee member will give a little summary of that.
Yes, we have posters and flyers for...
So Sam, we can put those out later for people to get. Can you just do your presentation?
Yes. So on the 17th, there's going to be a great youth event, so anybody, young people, this is a great opportunity to share your voice and opinions in a safe community. And we also have the Juneteenth Committee. We present a movie matinee Friday, the 21st, at the community center at 4:00 PM, and it will likely last until maybe 6:30 or 7:00 PM. And the movie is the 6/8. It is Black History Month, and we want to celebrate the empowerment of our people and everybody and see what happens when, you know, we come and work together. So come join the celebration.
May I have a motion to authorize the community center for the two events?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And Resolution Number 4, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with NYSERTA for the purchase of an electric vehicle in the amount of $75,000. I know we talked about this before. Now we're actually asking for authorization to actually execute the agreement for the purchase. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that will be the first electric vehicle for the village. Resolution Number 5, authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with Westchester County through the county legislator for library programs in the total of $8,925.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then I'm going to ask for one, one motion to authorize, Resolution 6, 7, and 8, authorizing the sale of the surplus for a 2006 Chevy Silverado to the highest bidder for the amount of $23.25. Authorizing the surplus of a 2018 Ford Explorer, police utility vehicle, to the highest bidder, and authorizing the surplus impounded Jeep Cherokee, Grand Cherokee, for public, for sale to the highest bidder as well.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And if we can pay the bills, authorize the approval of vouchers in the amount of $288,554.72. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. And that'll take us to departmental reports, and we'll start with the chief of police, Larry Rhoda.
Good evening. I just want to start off by saying, announcing the police exam. It's once every four years in Westchester County. Unfortunately, it came up really quick through Westchester County Human Resources, and the filing date ends February 24th. So they only gave us a four-week window to get the word out. So we have a social media campaign. We also have flyers out and about throughout the community. So we ask anyone that has, knows anyone within the village to sign up that wants to be a police officer, even just take a shot at the test. If they don't, they could always decline. But overall, the DNA of our department comes from members of the community, and it shows time and time again that when we hire residents within the community, they get back to the community in an ever-so-great way, because they know the community, they know the residents, and they know all about Tuckahoe. Once in a while, we do, as we know, take this transfer that meets qualifications, but we really want to get the word out to the youth to take the police exam and become a Tuckahoe police officer.
Great.
Update on our traffic sensor project. The actual hardware has been installed in Depot Square, also on Lake Avenue, at Scarsell Road, Marble Dell at Main Street. The Marble Dell at Main Street is up and functioning. The Depot Square project, we are dealing with underground cabling at this time to get the wires to the actual units, but you'll actually see them installed. The one in Depot is right next to the post office. It's a candy cane-type camera, and that will be up and running as soon as we can get it to be up and running. We're running into some technical difficulties with the wire, but however, I have a positive outlook on this, and I believe it's imminent to get up and running.
To get repaired.
This past month, we began in-service training within the police department. It was day one of six mandatory days that we train our officers, and this was the first session, and we do policies, procedures, updates on laws, updates on all certifications. And prior to this, we are always continually looking for training for our officers throughout the year to set them up for trainings that come to our attention that cost the village no money to train, and we always look to get our men and women out there to train. Training is key to success in having our officers out there, current with the law, current with policies and procedure, and current with understanding culture and what's going on within our community. We recently conducted a specialized drone training, and we sent four officers to a drone training school. We actually hosted the school here, which I'm proud to do. One of the first departments that are going to have officers capable within a unit to respond to a crisis using a drone. We're not talking about the drones that were seen on TV several months back. This is a small drone, but what it does is it gives us the opportunity to put this drone up in case we have a missing person, such as someone with dementia or Alzheimer's, who tend to migrate towards the water or trains, and we've seen this before. Also, it's able to give us access to rooftops at a much quicker rate than having our officers go up there, and we can get an idea of what's going on in the event of a situation. We trained also with Eastchester Fire on this, so the fire department also certified eight of their members. So it's great that we were able to share technology and training, and the fire department plans to use this during a fire call, and they can launch one right up to the roof area to see what's going on prior to their men getting up there. So it was a great project working together, and I'm proud of it, and we're going to do some good stuff, and also for big events like our fireworks, the creepy crawler event, all different events where we could actually get the drone up to get some great visual shots, and also to have an eye on what's going on from above.
That's great.
I wanted to...
A question, chief. How many drones are we talking about?
We have just one drone.
Just one?
Yes. And we're going to look to try to get one under a grant that has some thermal imaging and some night vision stuff, but it's too costly for us to purchase, but we're going to try our best to get a grant. I wanted to say a special thank you to E-Captain Eastchin and Darrell Taylor for a wonderful celebration of Martin Luther King's birthday on January 20th. It was a well-attended event. Many of our officers went, and I wanted to give a special thank you to our police explorers who helped set up the day prior and then break down the event after. It's a great, it's a great event, and we're happy to be there and super proud that we're able to attend this and be part of the community. The Traffic Safety Unit was also out and about this past month in January, issuing 34 summonses to commercial vehicles throughout the village. As we know, the village is a major truck thoroughfare, so a lot of these commercial vehicles have issues coming into the village and safety concerns, so we were out there and about. Also, I want to remind everybody that the village speed limit is 25 miles an hour village-wide. I think we were one of the first communities to enact that once we were able to through New York State, and we're seeing good things from it, but I'd also want to remind everybody that it is 25 miles an hour. For the crime tip of the month, some recent incidents throughout Westchester County have occurred regarding high-end auto thefts. I just want to address it specifically. These thefts are targeting Range Rovers. So I want to put it out there, if you own a Range Rover, you need to be very careful. You're a target. They want your car with the keys, and they'll go through any extent possible to get that. So recently, in surrounding communities and throughout Westchester, we've been seeing home entries while people are home to get the keys to the car. So this goes for my tip, is that never leave your keys accessible that you can see through a window or near the door in the residence. Put the keys in a drawer away. When you're out and about, know your surroundings, see if anyone's following you home late at night. But these Range Rovers have become a big problem, and unfortunately, the public may not be aware of the dangerous aspect of driving one of these and being a victim of a crime. So we want to put the word out, and just if you're thinking about one, just second-guess it, because I could tell you I wouldn't want anyone to own it that I know. That's how bad it's been getting. Overall, we're doing great in the village. We just posted to the village website this afternoon our year-end report for 2024, so I recommend everyone goes on there. We're going to post it on social media tomorrow as well. It highlights all the things we've done throughout the year in 2024, and what we've done are... And what we've done are stats, all different events that we've gone to. So we're proud of it. So please take a look, and we're going to have some copies outside tomorrow right by Jackie's office there to hand out if anyone wants them. So we put some good work into it, and overall, it was a great year. We're looking forward to 2025. Advancing technology within the department, officer wellness throughout with training and getting our officers training programs for mental health. That's a big step that we did in 2024, and we're going to continue it into 2025. Overall, we're going to be fully staffed by June, which is great. So all our officers are out and about. I recommend you always say hello, or they'll say hello to you. As you can, as you may know, we do have officers that really like to communicate with the community, and I'm super proud of that, and it's a culture that we create here. And you may not see that elsewhere, but it's something that we do in Tuckahoe. And be able to speak to our residents, being open, transparent, and be able to communicate, listen, and just say hello, sometimes it's a great thing. And moving forward, we're going to keep hammering home at that. So--
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I really do appreciate that we're, we're really focused on mental health for police officers, because I know it's been an issue with, there's been a lot of violence either with police officers and their families or with themselves taking their lives, and we have not taken that lightly here. So we really focus on making sure that our, our police force knows that they, they're supported and that they can communicate if they need help.
Yes, and it's, it's a topic that's very important to me. So we've taken the lead on this in 2024. We've enhanced our officer wellness program with our canine therapy dog, Eddie, who was the first in Westchester County. We've also have a new EAP contact for our officers to speak to, and we've done multiple training sessions, and we also have events scheduled that we're going to be sending our officers to training. So we've taken great stride, and the reason for that is we want our officers with clear heads, knowing if they have to make a split-second decision, that they can do so. And overall, it's, it's a, it's a lot of work to, to get to a point where you know everyone is, their head is in the game, and they are well, because we don't want an officer out there whose head is not in the game and not well. And I could tell you that we have an open door here of communication, and I'm super proud of that. We have two sergeants that are in charge of mental health and officer wellness, and we're always looking for programs. So it's a topic that needs to be addressed throughout policing in general, and I'm proud that we're an agency that sees, sees this and have made change.
Thank you, Chief. Before we have is Frank not going to be here? Okay. So our superintendent of DPW is not here. I just want to acknowledge that Troop 19 is here, just to observe government fun times. So thank you, guys, for being here. And hopefully, you're leaving here learning something positive. So we don't have our DPW, so do you have anything, Camille? David? Oh, Swadish. There she is. Director of the Library, Swadish Pashananda. Apologize, Swadish.
No problem. Good morning, Mayor, Board of Trustees, and our wonderful community members. I left my glasses at home, so bear with me. I hope I can read it.
You can have, you can have one of the young people help you.
Oh, okay. Oh, my God.
Does that help?
Kind of, yes. Thank you. So I just want to let you know, as Mayor, you mentioned, we receive, going to receive the grant in the amount of $8,925. So the grant, the financial assistance we apply is going towards the Career Development Program, including comprehensive resume-writing assistant, building self-awareness to clarify career direction, explore career alternatives, LinkedIn, and Mark interview sessions. We felt like this will help our community to prepare for the competitive job market and other communication skills. So we are looking forward to this program, which we are going to start soon. And it's during, it's a Black History Month, so we have a couple of programs coming up. And these programs are on Zoom. The first one we have February, Thursday, February 20th at 7:00 p.m., Frederick Douglass Historic Site, to celebrate the incredible life of Frederick Douglass with the special Ranger Talk with Frederick Douglass National Historic Site. And we have Harlem Art Explosion from Innovation to Mainstream, which is also going to be on Thursday, February 27th at 2:30 p.m. And Carter G. Woodson Home National Historic Site, which is going to be on Thursday, February 27th at 7:00 p.m. And we have a Hybrid Book Club, and this month we are reading The Berry Pickers, Wednesday, February 26th at 6:30 p.m. And our ongoing program, ESL Classes, Knitting Club, in-person yoga class, which is on Friday at 9:00 a.m. And we started the ukulele lesson in the library for adults. And believe it not, last Friday, we have 10 people at the library who are interested in learning. So if you are, we have ukuleles, which we provide, and we have an excellent teacher who's teaching all of us. We have Tai Chi, we meditation, and we have a hybrid memoir writing class, which is also in-person, online, Thursday, February 13th at 1:00 p.m. An art program. And for children, we started, we did the storytime. Lot of people were requesting a special storytime for children on Saturdays. So we started, and we had a big crowd, more than 60 people, including children, were there. So because of special requests, we are doing special storytime on Saturday, February 22nd at 11:00 a.m.
You can celebrate my birthday that day.
Oh. And as you know, we have lot of, tomorrow is the Children's Valentine Day Craft, and then we have little kids pre-K yoga with Buddha Buddha, and it's for children two and a half to five years. It's such a cute program. Please come and, if you have somebody in the family, or just come and watch them. Wonderful. And Graphic Novel Book Club, which is for children grade third to fifth, and the book, They Are Reading Adventures of Invisible Boy. And we also have a Paws and Tails in the library Monday, February 24th at 3:30 p.m. So you can register for your child, 10 minutes reading session with the certified dog, Lucy. And that's a wonderful program also. And we have a Concordia Conservatory Musical Adventure for Chinese New Year, Wednesday, February 19, and bilingual storytime with Miss Ines. And Tuesday, Friday, these are our regular storytime. If you have any questions, please give us a call or, you know, email us.
Thank you. David, do you have anything? Gary?
If the board would like, I could bring you up to the speed on the boardhouse litigation.
Give an update.
I, I won't discuss the merits of the case, because we're currently in litigation, but I could at least bring you up to speed on the procedural, where we're at. So if this board recalls, you designated the boardhouse as an historic landmark. The developer then asked the board for a certificate of appropriateness based on economic reasons to demolish the house. That request was denied by this board. The developer then sued the village. His biggest issue was that he's saying that it was an illegal taking of the village, taking his property rights, and he sued for $3 million. So right away, the village made a motion to dismiss that complaint. The judge denied that motion. So then the village had to put in an answer, which we've done. And that's kind of where we're at right now. We've incurred, the village has incurred approximately $20,000 of legal fees, and we're at the point of litigation where it's discovery phase, where we give the developer what he asked for. They will ask for things from him, and we exchange documents. And that becomes very costly from a litigation. That's the costliest part of the litigation. And that's kind of, we haven't started it yet, but that's the stage we're at. The village is being represented by two councils. One from the insurance company that's been appointed by the insurance company, and an outside council that the village has hired also. So those are the two council. But that's where we are procedurally. I know there's a conference with the judge towards the end of the month, and they'll probably set its discovery schedule at that conference.
Right, okay. Does the board have any questions that anybody would like to ask? Yeah, we're pretty, pretty up to date, up to speed on that. Thank you very much for doing that. Okay, so that will take us to future dates. So Village Board Work Session will be on February 27th at 7:00 p.m. The Village Board Work Session is open to the public. Several people have asked this. Any time that the board has a quorum, that means that there are more than three or more people present that are from the board, that, that meeting has to be noticed, and everyone is welcome to attend, anyone from the public. So that's just some information for Troop 19. Also, we have our Village Board Meeting on March 3rd at 7:00 p.m., and the meeting will be here. And that'll take us to the Board of Trustee Member Reports, and Trustee Lang, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank you for inviting the young people, James, Nye, and Grace.
Wasn't that awesome?
Yes, it really was. Thank you so much. Their art was wonderful. So first, beautification. The Beautification Committee of 2025 fundraising is in progress. A mailing was sent out to all property owners and businesses in the village. So please support our beautification fundraising efforts. Our village looks great. Let's keep up, you know, keep up the good luck. Our community center, so tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., there'll be elections for county executive. Please get out and vote. Monday, February 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there's going to be a youth brunch. Everybody's home from school, that's President's Day, so it'll be nice for the young people to come out, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., a youth brunch at the community center. And as Sam had mentioned a moment ago, Friday, February 21st, is Movie Night honoring Black History Month. The movie will be 6-8-8. And we encourage everybody to get out. Starts at 4:00 p.m. Thank you for that, Sam. On the 28th, just like the gentleman had mentioned, Tuckahoe Pride Movie Night at 6:30. Please come watch and sing along with the film rent. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Is singing aloud? Sing-along, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Lang. Trustee Gaccio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll start with the History Committee. They're putting the finishing touches on the website. Actually, you and I have to sit with them, as well as the rest of the board. So they will kind of show us what they've been working on and get that up for the public, which I've had some sneak previews, and it's, it's a lot of good stuff. The Echoes of History Research and Video Project is ongoing, and they're currently reviewing the student content in preparation for recording. This month, they had, wait for it, 10,400 views on Facebook.
Wow.
That's basically going viral. That is really, really good, with 565 interactions. Their most popular posts included Richard Forlione Day, well-deserved, World War II service members, a picture of that donated by Lena De La Shuka, and an older picture of Maynard Street. And as always, the History Committee is hard at work all the time, but especially here at Village Hall on Wednesdays from 9:30 to 12:30, if you are interested in joining them. Historical Preservation Commission, I got that they have a work session on 13th, Gary, I think? Work session, 13th here. It's usually at 6:30-ish. Yeah, perfect. Good. Thank you. Library, I'll now be reporting on the library, which is great. I had my first meeting with the library board this past month. Thank you for welcoming me. I don't have much to add that Swadish hadn't said already, but I do want to say that my three-year-old, Carmella, went to the Saturday book reading and loved it. There were so many kids there. We had a great time. I think we monopolized the computers afterwards, but it was, it was a lot of fun, a lot of energy. So thank you for the weekend programming. We'll move on to veterans. Chief Rhoda had mentioned the police exam upcoming. Earlier this month, I spoke with our former chief, who is now the, the head of the Chiefs Association of Westchester County, and they are sponsoring scholarships to a study class for the exam. And the scholarships are, there are scholarships for veterans, women, and minorities to help promote diversity. We really encourage you, or they really encourage you, to take that study exam to kind of help you with your test, to help you become a police officer, if that's what you're looking to do. So for more details on that, reach out to the chief, reach out to me, reach out to anybody on the board, and we'll point you in the right direction. We're asking you to mark your calendars. I know we still, we have snow on the ground, but the Memorial Day Presentation at East Chester High School will be May 15th, so mark your calendars for that. The Memorial Day Parade will be May 18th, and it is going in the right direction this year. It is ending here at Depot Square, which is the right direction for the parade. Lastly, I will have some more information going up on our sites here and on our social media, but April is the month of Military Child, and we are collaborating with various veterans groups around Westchester County to collect items for younger children, for veterans and their families, kind of starting locally and then branching out, but all of it staying here in New York State. So you will see some, some more information on that, but the key date for that is March 29th, where we'll have a bit of a gathering at the community center at Lake Isle. So you'll see more information about that. Lastly, just to reiterate what Trustee Lang said, tomorrow, get out and vote if you haven't done so already. Thank you, Mayor.
You got it. Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start with the Tuckahoe Housing Authority. On January 6th, they started repairs on the elevator. The estimate was 12 weeks, although they've had a few things that have happened during the way. They are still on schedule, it is still on schedule to be completed in the 12-week period. So far, the residents have adjusted to the elevator being out. The Deputy Mayor, Carol Cronin, and myself have been there, working with them. They've given them our contact information. Some of them have already reached out to us when they need help. So, so far, so good. Everything seems to be going okay. Then next is the E-Cap. The E-Cap Board would like to thank everyone who participated in our MLK Breakfast, everybody who braved the cold, the snow, and then all the volunteers. It was an awesome event, and we thank everybody for donating to the E-Cap and supporting the E-Cap. The E-Cap has a 16-week art workshop that started on February 3rd. And E-Cap Community Conversation, a mental health series, will begin on March 1st. There will be seven sessions. They will be on Saturdays from 10:30 to 12:00 noon. And anyone who wanted to participate, who wants to participate, can call E-Cap to register. Call 914-337-7768. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Good evening, everybody. I want to say welcome to Troop 19. Thank you all for joining us and learning more about the democratic process. Speaking of which, tomorrow is Election Day, and I know it's the middle of February, but we have a special election for county executives, so please make sure that you go out and vote. Voting is at the community center. I believe it starts at 6:00 a.m. and concludes at 9:00 p.m. So it is your opportunity to make your voice heard, and this could potentially be a close election, because probably so few people know about it. But we are choosing the county executive to replace George Latimer, who went on to Congress. So please make sure you go out and vote. As a result, Father Fata Hall will be used also for voting, so the seniors are not meeting tomorrow. The senior center is closed. So if you are part of the senior center, please don't go. But the seniors are having their Valentine's Day lunch on Thursday at Roma, so I believe that's at 1:00 o'clock. And if you are interested, please reach out to Michelle Olivia for more information. The zoning board is meeting Wednesday at 7:30. There are a few items on the agenda. 173 Marble Dell, which is the Broken Brook Brewery, is putting in a special permit for a commercial kitchen. 13 Harrison Street has a request to finish some attic space and convert the garage to an office. And 91 Summit Avenue is requesting a new addition. For planning, which is actually next Wednesday, generally, they meet on Tuesday, but I believe because of the holiday, they're meeting next Wednesday. I think that's the 19th. There are several things on their agenda. 84 Main, Main Street is an application for a new barber shop, so it's exciting. 84 Main, Main Street is an application for a new barber shop, so it's exciting. 170 Marble Dale is putting in an amendment for their site plan. 69 Main Street, which is right next door, is an application for a new skincare business, also very exciting, so we have some new things coming to the village, hopefully. And 173 Marble Dale, again, is Broken Bow, and that's for their commercial kitchen. So if you have any interest in these things, please come out and see. These are interesting meetings, and they're a great way to find out what's going on in the village and let your voice be heard again. I'd like to just express the village's condolences to the following, the families of the following people who we lost this month. Dolores Garrett, William Robert Bredson, Felice Forgione, and Mary Ann Roberto. So all of them connected and long-term members of this community, and we just want to express our condolences. And then last thing, last night, I was at the community center with the Youth Community Fund, which is part of the larger community fund. They were doing a program about co-occurring disorders in young people, and it was a really great program. I just want to talk about it a little bit because it's a great source of information for anybody who might be looking for help or resources when dealing with 14 to 18, 14 to 28-year-olds who might be dealing with substance abuse or mental health issues. So apparently, about 22% of young people ages 13 to 18 have a diagnosical, diagnosable mental health disorder. About 50% of all mental health disorders begin by the age of 14, and 75 by the age of 24. And one in two young people who have a substance abuse issue are really dealing with mental health issues. And so last night, the program called, sponsored by the Harris Project, helped work with the young people to make them advocates to the people, the young, the peers that they work with at school, and get the word out about co-occurring disorders. It's a really great project, and if anybody is struggling to find services for their, the young people in their lives, don't be afraid to ask. The Harris Project is a great resource. It's a one-stop-shop. You make one phone call, and they put you in touch with all the people that you need. If you need any information about that, I can send you in that direction, no questions asked. So that is it, and thank you. Have a great one.
Thanks so much. It's good to know we have these programs available to people. At the last meeting, I talked to you guys about the liaison roles on the Board, and as you know, as I mentioned several times, this is a working board, so everyone takes on some responsibility in the community as a liaison. So I want to just go over the new liaison roles. Most of them are pretty similar and the same. There may be a few changes, but you can go on our website, and it will let you know who's responsible for which committee or other boards as a liaison, but I will call them out. You can always go back online and find them. I don't know that they're up and updated yet, but they will be soon. So Trustee Taylor is liaison to the Tuckahoe Housing Authority and ECAP. That's the East Chester Community Action Program. Trustee Lang is the liaison to the Beautification Association and the community center. Trustee Gaccione, the History Committee and the Historic Preservation Commission, the Veterans Library and Tuckahoe Schools. Speaking of History Committee, can you please ask Nick Zanzano to come back to do the presentations? And then our Deputy Mayor, Kara Cronin, is liaison to the Planning, Zoning, and Sign and Owning Boards, as well as the East Chester Schools, TESC, the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee, the Senior Program, and special events like the Creepy Candy Crawl, which everybody loves. And I'm also a liaison to ECAP along with Trustee Taylor, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and the EVAC, the East Chester Volunteer Ambulance Corporation. So those are the liaison roles. If you have any question in any of those areas, feel free to contact the liaison to either the Board or that project, and we'll be glad to give you more information or help you out if you need it. You've heard me mention a couple of times, if you either watched the meetings or attended, that we did receive a $1 million grant from our former Congressman Bowman for our upgrades to Depot Square. Thankfully, the chief was able to also get some grants to help us upgrade our lights that we've been waiting for, for decades, and we are right there. Because we have already been informed of the potential of freezing of federal grants by the federal government, we are holding off on beginning any projects because we don't want to dive into a project that we're not sure we're going to have the funding for. So I've gotten a few people who've said to me, well, the funding has already been appropriated. The federal government has put a freeze on any federal grants until they take a look at it and decide if they're going to release the money. So we do not want to, in good faith, begin any work that we're then going to be responsible for paying unless we're sure we can get that money. And as you all know, and we've talked about it a lot, our budget is very lean, and so we have to be very mindful of that. So for those who thought that we would get started right away, there's going to be a bit of a delay on our Depot Square project. Anything more about that, David? I pretty much covered it. And as everyone else has already mentioned, we do have, and I'm going to reiterate it, please get out to vote. Election Day is tomorrow. I know it's a weird kind of thing. It's a special election because the former County Executive won the seat to Congress, and he had to leave his County Executive seat early, and so the date for a special election was set for February 11th. I know it sounds very random. Everyone keeps asking me for the reason. I don't know the reason. That's the date they chose. So please make time, if you have not already gone, to vote early. Tomorrow, you can still vote for the County Executive role at the community center between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Okay, so please get out there. And that's it for me, and that will take us to a second opportunity to address the Board on any agenda or non-agenda items.
Sal Provenzano, 11 River Street. President of Friends of the Ward House. I understand and fully follow the comments that were made by the Village Attorney. One thing that was not mentioned in the comments is that Westchester County has appropriated $2.55 million toward the purchase and restoration of the Ward House. This is not a federal grant. This is a, this is money that was put aside in the capital budget by Westchester County. We, as Friends of the Ward House, are very happy about this. The fact of the matter is, it was the budget that we supplied to George Latimer and to Judah Holstein that they ended up adopting to the dollar. So they felt that our plan had merit. What I'm hoping for is that the Board of Trustees and the mayor will try to work in whatever way possible to assist Westchester County in the purchase of the Ward House by the County of Westchester. I think that this is a leadership opportunity. We have the dream team of trustees and a mayor that can get this thing done. We have a Village Attorney that has extensive real estate experience. We have a Village Manager that has won awards for how well he does as a Village Manager. So I expect nothing more than for the village to back this 100%, which brings me to my next point. It is no question that the developer who owns the Ward House has done nothing but make that property go down in value through willful neglect. I've mentioned to the Board, according to the law, that he was supposed to make sure, since this is a landmark, that he was supposed to make sure that this house was maintained to, at least to protect it. He's, not only has he not done that, but he's begun interior demolition, which he had gotten permits that were illegally approved by the Village of Tuckahoe. He did not follow the HPC law. And now, he's in a position, from what I understand, that he's, he's asking for way more than what that house is worth due to his own willful neglect. I expect nothing more than what the Village of Tuckahoe to stand behind this irreplaceable landmark, to work with Westchester County, and to make sure that this house is not destroyed. Because once it's destroyed, you can never get it back. And scores of veterans spilled their blood on that property on March 16th, 1777, before there was a GI Bill. So if I sound passionate about this, it's because I am. Any questions?
Thank you. So I want to go back to your, you know, the $2.5 million that you mentioned that the county has appropriated. So when I learned that, I contacted the county and asked, you know, to have a meeting with them, and we had one with our attorney, to figure out, what does this actually mean? And what I learned was, and Judah Holstein told me he wanted to be here, he couldn't make it here, what I learned was that the $2.5 million that was put into the budget is not actually appropriated money yet. It's money that has to still be voted on by the legislature. And when I spoke to the County Executive, Ken Jenkins, what he said was, we can have the property appraised, and we will pay for it, which they have. I got word today that they actually have appraised the property. The report is not complete yet, but they have appraised the property. The other, the obstacle to this is that that money is a, is money that's appropriated for a five-year plan if the legislature votes to approve it, which is not something that's going to happen right away. The problem is that time is not our friend. We're in the middle of litigation. The judge is pushing that there's a resolution soon, and so this is, this is a dilemma. I wrote to the county and asked them to please take over, so to speak, the negotiations with the developer, and they've done that. So they were in touch with the developer to get in property, access to the property, and to appraise the property. So the money is not quite as accessible as some may think, or as it's portrayed. The money is really not there until the legislature votes for that money to be appropriated, and even then, it's over a five-year period of time that it's dispersed. So that's one clarification. The other thing that you mentioned about the permit, Gary, can you talk a little bit about the permit that we issued to the developer?
That's, that's an issue that's being litigated right now, so I don't want to discuss.
Okay.
We did issue the permit.
Fair enough.
Absolutely, and that's being litigated whether it was appropriated or not.
Okay, okay. So we really can't get into that. But I will say one thing. So when this Board in May of 2021, it was brought to our attention that we did have, you know, and this all came out of the smokestack that came down. There was a smokestack at One River View that was not being taken care of, and we realized that it came down because there was nothing really to protect it. The village, and I'm just going to say, it was really as negligent as the building in taking care of it. And so that property came down, and so when I became mayor and the, I think Deputy Mayor and Trustee Taylor were present at the time we voted to pass legislation. That legislation was passed in, in May of 2021. We formed the Tuckahoe Preservation Committee, and then in January, we passed the Historic Preservation Law. At the time, we were working with, at the time, we were working with the Historic Preservation Committee to craft the legislation that we thought was reasonable for us. We used other, and we had the help of our attorney, to craft something that made sense for us. At the point that we realized we wanted, or the Friends of the Ward House wanted to purchase this property, the Friends of the Ward House said, well, you know, we can't get the developer to, to give us a number. We don't know, we want to buy it. So we got that. We got that information. The Friends of the Ward House have been really pushing for this. The problem is that, to purchase the property, you need money. And if the money isn't there, then the village has to make a determination of how far we can go, and we don't know, because we're still litigating. But the one thing that I can say publicly is that while the history of all of the properties that we have, we're going to designate in Tuckahoe are important, we also have a fiduciary responsibility to safeguard taxpayer dollars. And as you heard from our attorney, we're being sued for $3 million. What that amounts to in the end, I don't know, but we are being very careful about the steps that we take to, number one, safeguard history, but also safeguard taxpayer dollars. Because I would venture, if we asked the majority of taxpayers, are you willing to litigate to fight this $3 million case, I wonder what people would say. So, you know, we're in a bind, and I, my heart really does go out to those who have been really vocal about wanting to keep that edifice. We, as a Board, have multiple responsibilities, so we can't just look at one, one thing. We've got to look at it, all of it. And that's really where the dilemma comes, and where people, we've been sort of villainized in some, in some way, and that's where we fall under the category of no good deed goes unpunished. We passed the law, we did all the things in good faith, and now we're at a crossroad, and we have to figure out where we go from here. And we are going to do the best that we can as a Board, and I think everybody here, and anyone can speak at this point at the Board, really has the same interests at heart, and that's preserving history, making sure that we're responsible with taxpayer dollars. And both those things are important.
No, I agree. I just want to respond to one thing. I said in the last meeting that I have the utmost gratitude and appreciation for the Board for passing the legislation. What I am disappointed about is that the Board did not enforce the law. And I'm not just talking about the permits. I'm talking about, it was, and you bought up the smokestack, that's a perfect example. Tuckahoe allowed that smokestack not to be maintained for 20 years, and then all of a sudden, it has to come down because of the willful neglect of whoever owned it at that point. I talked to you, Mayor, for over the last two years, and I said, this guy is not doing anything to preserve that property, and you assured me that you would get him to do something, and nothing was done except for weeds growing out of it. Now, when they talked about raising money, we had a gentleman, Andy Hendry, who had, gave $651,000 that I have in my book, that the money was sitting there. And Mr. Holcomb, Gregory Holcomb, who owns the property, said at HPC meetings that he bought it for land value only. The land value is appraised at $552,000. He was offered $99,000 more than what he said it's even worth himself. $3 million, it's a very interesting figure that he gives. He got those four properties up there for $3 million. He got a fire sale from Concordia College, of which now he has developed three out of the four, where he's put two houses on the Dutch Schultz property. So, you know, don't cry for me, Argentina. I mean, it's, we cannot allow a developer that is doing willful neglect and that is asking substantially more than what a property is worth to get away with scaring the village into not, into not legislating. Sometimes, sometimes hard decisions are hard. You got to do the right thing, even though it's not easy. And I expect nothing more, Friends of the Ward House and the community expects nothing more than for the village to do the right thing and to fight this, and to appeal. If, if, if the judge, if the judge comes out against it, appeal. Because we believe, and our attorney, we have an attorney too, believes that we are in the right, and that this cannot go the way that it is.
So let me respond to the gentleman, Andy, that offered the money.
Yes.
To purchase the property. I spoke with him, since you brought it up. I spoke with him personally, because when I was informed that there was a buyer, potential buyer, I was ecstatic. I said, I would love, he wanted to purchase the property on behalf of the Friends of the Ward House, so I called him, and I said, I'd like to, you know, hear more, and I, what can we do to support you? And his response to me was, I will not put my money into this project because I have no faith in the Friends of the Ward House. He said that to me. Now, when I spoke to the Board about it, of course, my Deputy Mayor didn't believe it, so she said, I want to talk to him myself. And she called him, and he told her the same thing. So it's not information that I really wanted to publicly talk about, but since it came up, this is the information that we got. We are, for us to, as you said, to appeal it, means we have to spend a lot of taxpayer dollars. It's easy for some to say that. It's a different thing when you're sitting here and you're looking at our budget, and we're looking at all of the deficits and the areas where we have holes. So we have to be mindful of all of it. And again, I am not saying that we are not And again, I am not saying that we are not, I can't say what is going to happen, because we don't know where we are at this point. I just know that I want to make sure that everyone is clear that, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, I'm speaking for myself, I will be very mindful about spending taxpayer dollars to fight this. To what end? That's the concern that I have, to what end? So if there's anybody else on the board that would like to comment, you're welcome to do so now, and then we'll let somebody else have an opportunity to come and address the board. Is there anyone else? Kara?
So for me, right, we're looking at $3 million in litigation and another maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of legal fees. At that point, this could become a $1,200 to $1,500 per household item that we are not providing services with, we are not providing programming with, we are not helping community members with. It's just, it becomes a huge bill. And I honestly want to know, and I would love people to come with input, like, are we okay with us spending that kind of money when we don't know what the outcome will be? And my, our job, our single biggest job here is our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers here. We want to preserve our history, of course, but there's going to have to come, there may have to come a limit, and we have to be realistic. I encourage you, please reach out, call us, let us know what you're thinking, let us know how you're feeling. Like, are you okay with us gambling that kind of money? And I imagine that a lot of people are not okay, because when, you know, we raise taxes by $67 on any given year, it becomes an issue. People are hurting, right? We're in the middle of a financial crisis, we're dealing with record inflation, the price of groceries is very high, and so it's really difficult for me as a policymaker to say to somebody, to say to our residents, we potentially could have to fit the bill for this. And so I encourage input, I would love to hear from people, I'd like to have conversations about it, but, you know, there comes a point where we're going, you're right, we have to make difficult choices, and they're not always the choices that we want to make, they're sometimes the choices we have to make.
Well, the good thing is, is that Westchester is becoming the lead dog in this, at this point. Because they're the ones that put the money in, and whether, whatever we call it, it's in the budget. They wouldn't have put it in if it was a fictitious number. So I expect nothing more than for Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Westchester to take a leadership role and to not get to the 10-yard line and take a knee. I mean, now it's the time to do the difficult things, and that's all that we expect. The Friends of the Ward House was nothing more than a group trying to put forth an idea and to get people involved. You know, we were in a position where we tried to rally the troops, and we have, and I think we did a damn good job respecting the $651 that we got in the beginning and the $2.5 million that's in there. Now it's up to people that can move the ball forward, because let's face it, the developer doesn't want to talk to us. The people that can move the ball forward, we expect them to move it forward. That's all I'm asking for, okay?
Anyone else would like to? Trustee Elaine, you look like you wanted to say something? Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board?
Hi, Elaine Provenzano, Love River Street, Friends of the Ward House, Chair of Education. So I had a question. Who gave you that information about that it was going to be $1,500 per household, that it was going to be $3 million? Where did that number come from?
That's the lawsuit. We're being sued for $3 million.
Okay.
So she just did 2,700.
So there's no kind of, there's no other kind of number being thrown around there? Just $3 million, $3 million is what?
That's what we're being sued for, right? Yeah.
Okay. So what I find very interesting, I was actually on the HPC, the Formation Committee for the Historic Preservation Commission. The most important building in Tuckahoe is the Ward House, not because I say it. If you look on your website, when it has, when the committee was being put together, the list of places that should be historically recognized, the Ward House is there. We all know what happened there. If you don't, please check out our website, Friends of the Ward House, wardhousefriends.org. The questions that I have, again, as Sal said, so appreciative of all that the board has done to get this law passed, to do the moratorium, to be respectful of all parties, but as part of that law that pertains to historical houses, houses need to be respected and maintained. And this house has been disparaged totally, this house in 2021 had students living in it. We have been told that it's going to fall down. It has been neglected since it has been purchased. And the thing that disturbs me, that in November, we're hearing that, let's see what you can do, let's see what the Friends of the Ward House can do, and in the meantime, we come to the Historic Preservation Commission, and we find out that permits, demolition permits have been given, we are not allowed to talk about it. No one is allowed to speak to us. But in the meantime, through a foil, and this is good for the students to know, the Freedom of Information Act, you can get ahold of records, which I did through the Building Department. The demolition permit was issued. The application was the 12th of November. The permit was given on the 20th of November, to remove cabinets, appliances, fixtures, and radiators. The permit is incomplete. The permit was filed by Adirondack Fisheries, which I guess is allowed. Electrician's name is not listed, but the Certificate of Compliance from Better Homes Electrical Inspection Services, which was requested by L.D. Electric, which I guess were the electricians that weren't listed, says electrical inspection to certify that the power from the utility company was disconnected at 230 White Plains Road. House to be demolished. This is in the file of the Building Department. House to be demolished. And we have been land-baseded for asking about permits. This is why we are asking about that. And we have been dismissed. We have been called from neighbors who have seen Con Ed taking out the electric and gas. If a historical house is to be maintained, if we are under litigation, and nothing is to be done while we're under litigation, then why is this happening right now? As a citizen, I have that question. Does anybody have an answer? And December 2nd, it was announced that the county had the funding. But it just felt like everything was like, whoa, 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 whoa. So there's lots of questions here, and I feel very little transparency for a village that I really believe in, and I've given my heart, and will continue to give my heart
So I really wish that we could have a more transparent conversation, Elaine.
So do I.
And we will at some point. I just really can't speak to all the details of things that are being litigated. It's not because I don't want to, because you know me, in all the years that I've been here, I've been pretty transparent about everything.
But this should have happened.
But when it comes to the point of this litigation, I cannot speak of certain things because it could harm the village. And frankly, not me personally, it will harm the village.
If litigation is going on, how can actions be happening? I understand. So nothing should have been, everything should have been frozen while we're in litigation.
So if you'd like to come in and talk about it, then we can schedule time. I don't want to have this full conversation here, because there may be other people who need to speak, and I want to be respectful of that. But you're welcome to come in, so we can talk about what it is that we can talk about, which is sort of, you know.
Well, I would, I would think that being asked how permits were approved is something you could talk about, Gary. I don't, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
These permits were approved, and that the house is to be demolished according to this. How did this go through?
I think, I think.
The word demolished.
Enough already.
I'm sorry, can you please not call out Suzanne and mute your phone, please? Thank you.
I believe the Friends made a motion saying that it was inappropriate to the judge, and I think you lost on that issue.
No, we didn't do that.
You didn't? Has he not ruled on that issue?
Yes, the judge did rule and refuted the Friends.
We took, we took back the, that, okay? And he gave us. So you withdrew it? We withdrew it because he gave us another date. He's still reviewing it.
So is that the February 24th date?
In fact, the judge was very surprised that Tuckahoe is not backing the Friends of the Ward House. He said, how can, how can the Friends of the Ward House be the only standing person here? And the reality is, is that this is dedic, this is really, we're focusing on why the law wasn't enforced, okay? That's, this is not a personal attack on anybody. This is, this is why wasn't the law enforced. Why do we have a law? If we have students here, there's the legislative, the executive, and the judicial branches. Those are the three branches of government, right? Once the law is passed, it has to be enforced. If it's not enforced, why not? That's all we're asking. That's it.
And why were permits approved when it was in litigation?
Gary, do you want to respond to that, or not at this point?
They say it's still an open issue in court, so I.
Right, right. Okay, okay.
I don't want, I don't want this hearing to be shown to the judge in court.
Right.
Or to be used, or the board says, or that they say, in the court. It's just going to, nothing here can help, help the situation.
Okay.
Let that play out. You made the motion to the judge, let the judge make the decision on that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
My name is Dr. Edward Powers, and I live at 6 McKinley Street in Bronxville-Tuckahoe, New York. And if I may, two items. Number one, I wanted to support what the Provenzanos said. I'm a member of the Friends of the Ward House, and the name of the potential buyer did come up, Mr. Hendry, okay? And actually, I met with him personally. We had several things in common. In fact, we both went to the same college, okay? Georgetown in Washington, DC. Different time, he's younger than me. So that was, there was, and he had a real interest in buying this, but my understanding is that he reached an impasse with the contractor about buying it and the price, okay? Kept on, the price the contractor wanted kept on moving, and moving up. So that's item number one. Item number two is, I speak Russian, and I've been a fan of Russian history, probably not very popular now, but I want to commend you on the three students that you had here today, okay? And they're seeing government in action. And I bring up Russian because the Russians have one word that means both peace and world, and that's mir, M-I-R. And they portrayed in their posters, both of those together. So I think it's beautiful that you honored them here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda
Hello, my name is Sam. I'm from 72 Main Street. With the current climate and with history repeating itself, I want to talk to the board and the community and hopefully raise people's spirits. There's a thing called revolutionary optimism. It's a real thing. Look it up, students, look it up. It is pretty much, if you, because your opponent wants you to feel hopeless and defeated and with constant bad news, you know, have all, be drained. But with revolutionary optimism, it kind of bounces off you, which allows you to fight for love, justice, and peace. So I want everybody to look into that as well. And I would like to also sing portions of two songs, one that everybody knows, but I want to start with one that I translated. Now, this is not going to make sense at first, but this song only exists in a fictional video game language. Anybody play The Sims? Mm-hmm, and Simlish? Okay. So after hearing this song, I, it touched me and moved me, it felt like a protest anthem, and I actually managed to translate it into English from a fictional language, and I would like to sing.
Not too long, right?
Yeah, no, I'm going to skip, a portion of. Their greed like fires charred all our futures. Why should anyone be denied their dreams and joy? They always claim they're right. My wages reaching boiling point. Whoop, and, not the whole song? I tend to stand, ignore the doubt, to ensure justice for all. They force us down, but we rise up like a firestorm bursting through. So we don't settle for status quo. Free the power that lies in hope. Be the best myself can do to lead the fight for love and truth. Whoa, 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 whoa. We don't settle for status quo. Free the power that lies in hope.
Thank you. Can we just leave it at one song? Because I think we've gone a little bit over our time.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Samantha. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? No? Troop 19, thank you for being here. We do have one more.
Thank you very much. I won't take up much of your time, but I just want to introduce myself. I'm Elizabeth Leckie. I live in. I live in Hudson, New York, but I was born and raised in Toccoho and lived there for the first 52 years of my life. And I've come back because I care as much about the history as I did then when I was village historian. And one of the projects that I took on was writing a booklet about the Ward House. It wasn't published exactly, but it was produced for Toccoho Day in the early 1990s. And I lived in the neighborhood and growing up, nobody taught local history in school. The only reason I knew that the Revolutionary War happened in Westchester was because people talked about the Battle of White Plains, but we had our own monument right there to Samuel Crawford and across the street from the Ward House, which everybody knew had been burned during the Revolution. And many years later, I'm still coming back here. I'm on the board of the Friends' House. I really care. A lot of my friends from the neighborhood are donors to the Friends' effort. And there's any people I know from Bronxville as well, who have, have been donors to our projects. So I just thought I should share that because I, I live two hours away, but I, I like to come down to the meetings and really see what's happening. And I love the way Toccoho looks today. I'm very pleased to be here at the board meeting and be able to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And welcome back. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Anyone on Zoom? Oh, I don't know, we don't have the Zoom up here.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
I just want to say that I am very proud of you people. You are a wonderful board. And as somebody said, you're the dream team. And just keep on doing what you're doing because you're doing great stuff for Toccoho.
Thank you.
Suzanne Servin, Oakland Avenue.
Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to address the board?
This is Ginger. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, because this is the first time I'm using Zoom since I wasn't working on the television.
Look at you.
Thanks to Julie Girdon, mind you. Has anyone thought about, and maybe it has occurred and I just hadn't been aware of it, that we take up a village donation? This village is great on taking donations for libraries for every cause we have, but to get it out there on a broader scope, that whoever wants to give money for the cause of retaining the Ward House or maintaining it, or both. Has that been done at all?
I think the Friends of the Ward House has done that.
Okay, I wasn't aware of it. Sorry. Will we be able to run that again next month?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, will the video effects, like, be able to listen to it on totally?
Yep, we're crossing our fingers. We have all the equipment in place and we're hoping to fix those glitches before then. So yes.
Glitches and that sound, we listen on 26.
Yeah, so we, we'll work on that. Thank you, Ginger.
Oh, good. Thank you so much.
Sure. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board who's on Zoom? Okay, if there isn't anyone else, thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Troop 19, I hope this was helpful for you. See, you survived. Have a good night, Toccoho. We will see you in March.